The August 12th, 2021 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, the invocation will be led by LaDarian Brown. LaDarian is a police area representative officer with the Long Police Department, a senior pastor of Parkview Baptist Church, and a member of the Arts Longview Board of Directors. The prayer and the pledge. Please rise.
Let us pray. First of God in heaven, we thank you, we love you, just allowing us an opportunity just to come together to do what is good for the people of your city and your community. God, we pray that all decisions that are made are acceptable within thy sight, and that we do the best that we can for the best of the people of this great city. May the words of all of our mouths, the meditations of our hearts, be acceptable within thy sight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a presentation presented by Longview ISD of memorabilia for the city's sescentennial time capsule. We are very honored to have Dr. James Wilcox with us, superintendent of Longview ISD. Dr. Wilcox, please come forward.
Always a pleasure, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. We have something that I think is very significant for our sescentennial, a state championship football for the Texas 6A championship, along with the medal, and a helmet that was worn by one of the players in that game, and subsequently been signed by everyone associated with that.
Wow.
And also, the Longview Voice, the local paper that the district has been sponsoring for some six years. We have three copies of that that are sealed, but I think the most appropriate thing...
I have this. This is funny. I have this picture.
We have a picture of the graduating class of Forest Park Middle School, when right over here, there's a young Mayor Mack, and we thought it would be good to include that in the memorabilia.
I recognize that the minute you pulled that picture out, Doc, that this was one of those times when, you know, they do this very often, but it did the whole class picture in one, in one long film, and so I remember that. I remember that very clearly, and, whoo, that hairstyle has not come back in a long time, has it? Want to thank Longview ISD for the support over the years, for all that you've frustrated Longview. We're just so fortunate to have wonderful school districts all across our, our district, but thank you for all that you do. Let's, uh, let's hold this. Hold that for me. We'll get a picture or two. Hold on a second. Doc, we're gonna take these masks off. I'm backstage, you're backstage, and we're gonna take them off. We're gonna... One more? Yeah. I don't think it's taller than you. Uh, I'm talking. Hey. This is gonna be awesome. We're gonna hold it. Hold on. How do they do it? Hold on. Wait a minute. Don't they do something like this? Thank you, Doc. I appreciate it. Appreciate it very much. Thanks for all that you do. This will be a wonderful decision. Thank you, sir. That's the closest I'll ever get to a Heisman Trophy football helmet or football, so had to take a chance while I could. We are now to citizen comment. I do have a few speaker cards. I'll take this off for now. We'll start with Laura Bledsoe.
Good evening. My name is Laura Bledsoe. I live at the Heritage Towers 208 North Green Street, downtown Longview. We have a situation where the streetlights are out in the front. They've been out since at least when I moved in in February. Also noticed on the southeast corner of Green and Methvin, one of those lights are out, and it's kind of dark in there. Heritage Towers is a 55-plus community. We're active, and there are ladies who will walk their little dogs around, and that corner especially is rather dark for that area. I also noticed last night that the corner as well, northwest corner, and two north of that on Green and Methvin, which is the Heritage Park, is also out. So we're hoping to get some lights in to feel a little more safer in that area. That would be it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have Robin McLamore.
Robin McLamore, 208 North Green Street, here once again regarding Heritage Tower of the Lights, like Ms. Laura just said, and thank you for coming, Laura. The lights have been out. It's dark, you know. Time is of the essence, you know, so we're just hoping that soon, and very soon, that the lights will come on. The young, the gentleman here, council said that he had spoke to someone regarding a situation he had last week, and he got a quick response for his situation, so perhaps he can help the rest of the council and showing them how you can get things done quickly, because time is of the essence, and we don't want to wait until something happens before the lights come on. Another thing I want to just address is, in our District III, the I-20 corridor, you know, has that been forgotten about? I know that area, I stayed in that area once before, and I'm 57, for at least 40 years or so. It hasn't changed, and I know it's not one person's fault or one mayor's fault. This has been going on for 40 years, and I know Mayor Andy Mack, you have attempted several projects there, having people come in and consult about what they wanted to do, and still, to no avail, nothing has happened. Me and my mother and grandmother passed there the other day, and she said, "This is a shame. I-20, coming off the interstate, and this is what we see coming into Longview?" Forty-plus years, and nothing has been done. We can't continue to do business as we continue, because we keep getting the same results. Thank you.
Excuse me if I missed this name up. Tony or Tony James? I'm sorry, Tony.
Tony DeGry.
Come up and speak all you want then.
Okay, my name is Tony Ja-- sorry, so you can hear me. My name is Tony James. My address is 208 Punsetta Lane, Cedar Hill, Texas, 75104. I am here to address the council, the mayor, and the members of the council for the estate of George Smith in, here in Longview, and I am here to represent a client that could not make it. They missed a first hearing because they were sick, and they couldn't make the next one, so they asked me to come and read a letter on their behalf. Okay, so it says, "Dear City Manager and City Council Members, reference case number My name is Rosetta Howell, and I am the daughter of the late George Smith. My representative, my representative, Tony James, has my permission to read this letter addressing my concerns. I am writing a response to the notice I received for, for a public hearing regarding a special use permit to allow a one-family dwelling in a heavy commercial zoning district, Lot 11, Block 3, at Viewcrest Edition, located at 2302 East Street. I am opposed to this change in zoning from commercial to a one-family dwelling. My concerns are as follows. I am opposed to the, this would limit my ability for resale if a new single-family home has been allowed to build in this heavy commercial area. This would limit my pool of prospects and may decrease the value of my property. I would, would not be the only one affected. It would affect the property owners, all property owners in Viewcrest Edition. I would question the quality of living in such a heavy commercial area. Would this bring in new challenges for the city and other homeowners in that area? What type of accommodations will we have to make? There could be noise complaints, parking issues, pollution, safety, et cetera, to consider. I see this, could please consider these potential issues before you vote on the zoning change? Thank you for your time and careful consideration. Rosetta Howell, on behalf of George Smith Estate. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am. Jake Thompson.
I currently live at 3600 Strayson Road in Longview, Texas. I'm speaking on behalf of the Hensley Park Maintenance. I am currently following a Hensley Park group, or Hensley softball group on Facebook, and I've been reading on how dangerous it has been getting at night. It's been taking forever for all the fluorescent lights to fully illuminate at game time. Sometimes it's taken like 45 minutes to an hour, maybe an hour and a half, and most of the times, it's not bright enough on most, on most fields. Like Field 1 is, like, a lot of lights are out. And I just want to make a request on all Field 4, or on all four fields, to be replaced with brighter lights that way us of the community softball, or, excuse me, Hensley softball community to play better, see better, and be more safe, because it's been, we've had so many issues with injuries and complaints. It's just getting dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no more speaker cards. Before we move on, Mr. Bonds, I'm just gonna ask you just a general question. Who is responsible for the lights at Heritage Building that people keep coming up and talking about? Who's, who's responsible for that?
It's my understanding that we do understand the lights aren't working, but there's a part that's missing, and the supply chain is broken, like many other things. We can't get the parts for those lights, but we're working on it.
But we are trying.
Yes.
We're doing the best we can.
Yes.
I didn't know if it was us or SWEPCO or where the...
I believe they're ours. Dwayne is here, yes.
Mayor Mack, in a partial order, would you say, you know... Yeah.
We've, like, the supply chains, you know, we're seeing it all over, and so we've, we've got them in order, and we should see them soon. We hope so.
Okay. I'm just curious, I mean, I didn't know if it was us, SWEPCO, but I know it's nothing. We're not neglecting anything on purpose, obviously. That's not, that's not our intentions, but I just didn't know where that, where that breakdown was. Thank you very much, Ms. Archer.
Thank you.
Do you need something, Mr. White? You got it?
No, I was just gonna refer to Mr. Archer as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
That was being...
Perfect.
Yes.
Well, we're doing the best we can. We're at the mercy of, like everyone else, supplies are sometimes hard to come by. I get it, and it doesn't, doesn't help situations, but we're doing the best we can, and we'll get to it as quick as we possibly can, okay? We have a word on that. I would consent to any items council like pulled off for separate discussion. If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the budget item. Consider resolution establishing the city fees and charges for the fiscal year 2021. Mr. Bonds.
Mayor, council, I have not received any questions or comments or concerns from anyone about the fees that we presented last week, and anyone has any questions or comments, I'd like to address them at this point. Otherwise, I think we're ready to go.
Any concerns or questions, Mr. Bonds? Very good. Thank you, sir. Now, I have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Ms. Cohen.
We need a motion on this.
Oh, we need a motion on this?
On the resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion on the resolution for the city fees and charges?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. My fault. Thank you. Now, a public hearing on the proposed budget. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you and good evening. The local government code requires a public hearing on the proposed budget. All required notices have been posted, and the adoption of the budget is next on the agenda.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments of Ms. Cohen? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
We don't need a motion on this, do we? We don't need a motion on this, just a public hearing. We don't, we don't motion until next time, right?
Please.
The last one. Yes, C, coming up. Okay, now, we'll have the ordinance adopted in fiscal year 2021, '22 annual operating budget. Mr. Bonds.
Yes, as Ms. Cohen just said, this is our last official action, having this last public hearing about the budget, and again, I have not heard any comments, questions, or concerns about the budget, and be glad to answer any questions anyone has at this point.
Any question, Mr. Bonds or Ms. Cohen? Very good. Now, we go on to the next.
No, you vote on the ordinance right now.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is confusing. Now, we're gonna propose here on the proposed tax rate.
There you go.
Okay, now, the proposed tax rate, it requires a public hearing. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. The proposed tax rate is 14.59 cents for debt service, 41.30 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 55.89 cents. City council will vote on the tax rate on Tuesday, August 19th, at 5:30 PM in the City Hall Council chambers.
This public hearing is now open. Is there any questions of Ms. Cohen?
One question.
Sure.
Ms. Cohen, once again, how does this rate compare to last year's rate?
It is the exact same rate overall as last year.
Okay, I have a question about that then. So the rate is the same, the tax rate's the same, our property values went up, but not as much as we anticipated them going up.
Exactly.
So we have had a net change of zero, basically.
In the property rate?
In the property, in our tax rate.
In the tax rate, yes.
Yes, correct. Just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Okay, thank you. If no other questions, the public hearing is now closed. Now, we'll consider a motion to ratify the property tax revenue increases reflected in fiscal year 2021, '22 budget. Ms. Cohen.
When a budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the prior year, a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the revenue increase reflected in the budget is required by the local government code. This budget will raise more revenue of approximately 1.2 million, which will be utilized for maintenance and operations. This item takes a special motion to approve.
Any questions, Ms. Cohen, at this time?
Mayor, I move to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank you all for, for doing this again, and, and I just want to, I want to reiterate, this budget cycle has had no increase in taxation to our residents, coming through COVID, coming through all the things that we've done, the decreased sales tax revenues, the upswing in our sales tax revenues now, but with smart budgeting, smart forecasting, and conservative management, we've been able to do this without having to increase our taxes, and I think that's very important for the citizens of Longview to know that we're trying our very best to be stewards of your money and to spend it wisely. And I think everyone in this budget process deserves a round of applause for keeping the tax rate where it is and allowing us to continue to provide the exact same services and even more this year than we did last year on the same tax rate. So I appreciate y'all very much. We're now to zoning. Public hearing on, on Z-21-13. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. So the applicant is requesting a rezone of approximately 5.33 acres of abstract 256 M. Man survey tract 3-02, Section 1, from agricultural to heavy industrial zoning district located west, at the west intersection of West Loop 281 and J.C. Drive. The applicant would like to construct a telecom office and shop at this location. Loop 281 is classified as a principal arterial roadway, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any discussion on the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held at, consider, PD-21-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD-88-01 to allow for an expansion of an existing car wash for approximately 0.57 acres of abstract WM Robinson survey tract 34, Section 3, located at 3325 Gilmer Road. The existing car wash has a six-bay car wash with one row of vacuum bays to the west. The applicant is proposing an additional five bays, one office, and they will remove an bay from the existing car wash that's located along Gilmer Road. That would be a total of 10 bays with eight vacuum bays. Through the development process, all other city codes will be met. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, consider PD-21-02. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to revise an existing site plan for PD-19-01 to allow for self-storage mini warehouse. This development is located at the southwest intersection of Spring Hill Road and McCann Road. The previously approved planned development site plan showed two self-storage mini warehouse buildings with office building totaling 100,000 square foot. Each building was to be approximately 50,000 square feet in size and be split level two story. The applicant is proposing to increase the conditioned storage area to 125,000 square feet and to increase the maximum building height of, of the second building to three stories. The previous plan showed a proposed second driveway for emergency access only, and that driveway has been removed. All conditions of the previous planned development will remain the same. The applicant will adhere to the landscape plan that was previously approved. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi?
Angel, now, that, that additional building is not gonna be any taller, right? Because they're going down with the grade.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Choi, and VTH had no issues with this. Remember, when we first did this a few years back, or whenever we did it, they had some issues with it, but they're okay?
Yes, sir. The applicant did reach out to their adjacent neighbor, VTH Bank, yes, sir.
Very good. If no other questions, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held at, consider, S-21-06. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. Get to the slide. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. For a specific use permit is required for one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There is a one-family dwelling unit located directly north of this property, as seen here in this aerial. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and therefore does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi?
Ms. Choi, can you show us where Mrs. Howell's property is?
Yes, sir. She, it actually is under the George Smith Estate, which is right across the street on Cedar Street, near the intersection of Street, Cedar and Holland.
Down there, okay.
Yes, right there.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
Why in the world would we put a house in the middle of a heavy industrial area? This been, are we going to convert that to residential, the whole area? Is that the plan, or...
Well, so the applicant asked if, you know, a house could be located here, and, you know, per the UDC, single-family homes are not allowed in commercial zoning districts anymore. They were previously, in the previous zoning ordinance. There are other homes in this area. There's not a lot, but there are quite, there's, I think, about five or six homes in that area, one directly to the north of it. Staff really didn't see a problem, just because there are existing single-family homes there.
Are they new homes, or have they all been there for a long time?
Yeah, it's a mix. There's, you know, there's some, most of them are existing. There's one, the one to the north is probably, I think, the newest one, and has been remodeled.
Ms. Choi, so if we allow this, this single-family home to go in there, this will not hinder if someone wanted to come in and put a heavy commercial building there, if it's zone heavy commercial, correct?
That is correct.
And so the people that are building these houses there would have to just deal with that, because they knew it was heavy commercial going in, and if someone wanted to come in and put a heavy commercial, whatever you want to call heavy commercial, right there next to their house, they're not gonna come up here and say, "Don't let them put that in there," because they knew that that was already there, correct?
Yes, sir.
So there's no, there's no question about this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Angel, can you show me the house property? Is there a house on it?
It is vacant.
It is vacant.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions, Ms. Choi?
You said there are about five homes that are already located in that, in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Single-family homes?
Mm-hmm.
And they are, they are occupied.
Yes, ma'am.
They're not vacant properties, so, okay.
Yes, ma'am? Ms. Tony?
Sorry, I just wondered if...
It's good. Come up to the microphone. It's a, it's a public hearing. You're allowed to speak again. Yes, ma'am.
I went through that area, and it is very heavy commercial, and what I was saying was the same thing you guys, will it flip over at some point if you do one person, then you did this person, now you can't do me, so, you know, what direction would it be going, and that's why I said it would impact my client. Also, there are some vacant homes there. I believe in there abandoned home on the end of Garrett, that way.
You're right, there is one, but most of them are occupied.
Yeah, most of them are occupied, but there are some abandoned homes and stuff there as well. So that was my concern, that I wanted to, you know, what would that pose, what would that look like in the future for my client?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate your consideration.
Well, and that, and that's what I wanted to ask Ms. Choi, to make sure that we will continue to have the heavy commercial designation of your client's property and the properties around these two homes that, that are there, if we, if we approve this, so that designation is not gonna change, and if they can put something heavy commercial in there, then the people that are building these houses, they, they were aware of that, and so they can't really complain about what might go[1759.36] And so they can't really complain about what might go in next door to them. Does that make sense?
It doesn't change the zoning designation. They're just asking a specific, specifically to allow for that use to be allowed in heavy commercial.
Yes.
Because the remaining properties around there, if, of course, there's a lot of different owners around there. If they wanted to get, wanted to get together and sell to one big person, they could do that. And it wouldn't impact those. It would impact the house being built, but they know that going in. And so that's that buyer beware. And that's, that's going to be on them, not on the people that own the property that's already zone heavy commercial. Make sense?
Makes sense.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions, Ms. Choi?
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
The home that they're proposing to be built, is it in a slip area? And is, do we know?
I would have to look in our map, but most likely, it probably is in the slip area.
But that doesn't change any of the zoning of the other nine lots.
No, sir, it does not.
They stay heavy commercial.
Yes, sir.
This is one. Thank you, ma'am.
If there's no other questions, well, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing held at considers S-21-07. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a two-family dwelling known as a duplex in heavy commercial zoning district located at 604 East Methvin Street. Duplexes are not permitted by right in heavy commercial zoning districts. They are allowed with a specific use permit to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Currently, this building is vacant. However, previously, there have been many uses in this building, including a single-family home. East Methvin Street is a local roadway and is maintained by the city. Residential uses are appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. The planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? Ma'am, did you need to say something?
No, I'm sorry. I just recognized the building. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I thought, I didn't mean to close the public hearing if you wanted to speak on that. So we're back to a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Items of community interest? Mr. Carpenter?
East Texas Food Bank, Gregton United Methodist Church. Be back at it again on the 19th, which is next Thursday, I believe. Free grocery items available, no qualifications. They'll be there from 11 to 1:00, or while supplies last. Please make use of this, this great endeavor that will help anybody in our community from, from all districts, from all areas. And 11 to 1:00 on next Thursday. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Notting?
Good evening, everyone. There will be a CPR initiative on August 28th and 29th in the Stamper Park community. We will be doing property cleanup, basic home repairs. There will also be free vaccinations and microchips for your pets, as well as a COVID vaccine clinic on the 29th. So we're asking everybody to come out. If you're wanting to volunteer or if you need assistance, please contact us. Also, we need to, I guess, excuse Christian. I wanted to make sure we did that.
We have, Ms. Ishara is not here. Is there a motion to excuse Ms. Ishara?
I move that we...
Is there a second?
Excuse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Nothing to name, some air.
Mr. Wright? Mr. Burtle? Mr. Bonds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm sure some of you know and some of you don't, but we had a press conference on Monday to give an update on the COVID status in our community. The CEOs of both hospitals were present and gave us some statistics on what their census and what's going on in their hospitals are and their concerns. Their concerns are, obviously, increased COVID patients in the hospital, which means increased staffing necessary and increased personnel and longer wait times and shorter amount of beds availability. According to their CEOs, there are approximately somewhere around 100 COVID patients at Good Shepherd and 47 COVID patients at Regional. There are 16 patients on the ventilator at Regional in the ICU. None of those patients had been vaccinated. Of the 47 at Regional, only one patient had been vaccinated. Of the around 100 at Good Shepherd, they said almost all of them were unvaccinated, whatever that means, 90 something, 99% or whatever. What, what they're trying to say is the majority of the hospital patients, hospitalized patients that are in the hospital right now with COVID are unvaccinated. And that's just a, a number. It's, it's a fact, according to the hospital CEOs. And so you can take that for whatever, however you want to extrapolate that. But I extrapolate that as if you are unvaccinated, you have a higher chance of being in the hospital with, with the COVID virus. If you want a vaccine, vaccines are available at over 40 locations in Longview. You can get one at a moment's notice. They're readily available to cheer, for your convenience. If you, this isn't saying you have to be vaccinated. And it doesn't say that if you get vaccinated, you won't get COVID because you can still get COVID. But what it does say is if you do get COVID and you're vaccinated, you're most likely not going to end up in the hospital. And if you don't have a vaccination, you get COVID, you have a higher chance of ending up in the hospital. It also doesn't say that you can't transmit the COVID virus if you've had a vaccine because you can. You can do all those things.